Call this meeting of the San Marcos City Council to order. This is a regular meeting. Today is Monday, August 5th. The time is 6:00 PM. Mr. Vino, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Prather, Mr. Scott, Ms. Garza, Mayor Houston.
I'm here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Gleason.
Here.
And Mr. Mendoza.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Okay. Our invocation this evening will be given by Father Christian Holly, who serves as the rector at St. Marcos Episcopal Church. Thank you for being here, sir.
Hey, thanks for inviting us out. I brought with me Reverend Rachel Joyner, who joined our staff last month and will be praying here next month. So I wanted to introduce her to y'all.
All right.
And offer a prayer from our prayer book for the armed services, which seems, yeah, like a fun one for civic service. So let us pray. God, our friend in sure defense, we commend to you, the city council. Lend them your wisdom and courage. Give them firmness of will, clarity, and justice in decision-making, prudence in care and planning, and a kind and fair disposition to all in their charge, safety in all their steps, and a guiding sense of your presence this day and always. Amen.
Amen. All right. It is now time for our pledges of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay. Ms. Reyes, I think you have. And a joyful announcement for us.
Yes, ma'am. I just want to formally announce Mr. Lonzo Anderson, who is our newest Assistant City Manager, to join our team as recent as today. So we're very thankful to have him with us. And he is literally hitting the ground running starting at a city council meeting day. But Lonzo comes to us from Dallas Police Department, has had an illustrative career with Dallas Police Department. He retired as an executive assistant chief for the city of Dallas. And so he is now, as he says, hanging up the uniform and getting into city administration overall and just trying to help give to our community. And he's very, very much a welcome part of our team. So thank you so much.
All right. Next is... I'm sorry?
Oh! I wasn't gonna make you.
Honorable Mayor, Council, City Manager Stephanie Reyes. It's been a pleasure being here today. Spent 27 years with the Dallas Police Department. Had a very, really great opportunity to serve in a really high highway in law enforcement. But I also wanted to stay in city government. And so I look for opportunities that are gonna be a great fit for me but also be a great fit for the community here as well, too. So I think I found my matrimony again. And I'm glad to be here. I'm glad to serve in the highway. Looking to contribute in the very highway to make San Marcos the best ever. So thank you so much.
Thank you. We're glad you're here. And now it's time for citizen comment. And the city council will hear citizen comments at work sessions, workshops, and regular meetings. There is a sign-up process online. If you wish to join us online, a call-in number and link will be provided to you. You may speak once, and you may not yield your time to others. If you speak now about a public hearing topic on tonight's agenda, I ask that you not repeat exactly the same comments again during the public hearing on the same topic. You will have three minutes to speak when you say your name. A timer is displayed on the screen, and you'll start in the green. When you're in the yellow part, you have less than 20 seconds. When the timer is red, your time to speak is up and a bell will ring. And we expect you to conclude your sentence and be seated. The mayor and council will endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and in an atmosphere free of defamation, bad words, intimidation, personal insults, profanity, or threats of violence. If you do any of those, you will hear the gavel, and I will ask you to leave the council chambers. And if you need help doing so, our officer can assist you. This is your warning. Yeah, something happened a few weeks ago. And so now I'm saying this part, too. Our first speaker, and I will call several names out so that you can be ready. First will be Ben Ruby, followed by Noah Brock, Annie Donovan, Josh Baselk, and Randy Bryan. Ben Ruby will be first.
Good evening. Ben Ruby, excuse me, 10101 Reunion Place, San Antonio, Texas. I'm here to answer any questions you have on consent item agenda number nine. Thank you.
Next is Noah Brock. Yeah, there he is.
Good evening, council. My name's Noah Brock, and I'm here to talk about the development regulations for roadways in the city limits and extraterritorial jurisdiction and how they relate to the smart terminal, aka Access Logistics Park. According to the Texas Local Government Code, a plat is required if a tract is being divided into two or more parts to lay out a subdivision of the tract or suburban building or other lots or streets, alleyways, squares, parks, et cetera, or other parts of the tract intended by the owner of the tract to be dedicated for public use. Section 3527 of the San Marcos Development Code states that new streets... In the new streets section, "The adequacy of the road network shall be demonstrated by preparation and submission of a transportation plan, transportation impact assessment, or transportation impact assessment when applicable, as determined by this chapter or responsible official." Section 105A3 of the Smart Terminal Development Agreement states, "Prior to or concurrent with the submittal of the first plat application for development on the property or any portion of, a traffic impact analysis will be required." Slide six of the presentation that you're going to see later states that staff are currently reviewing the plat. So where is this TIA? The public was reasserted that this would be done once this project was starting, but we have still not seen this document. As I'm sure you're aware, we have been putting in public information requests every 10 days for the past year. We should have access to all the documents related to this project, but that's not one of them. So it either does not exist, or it's being withheld. It's one of those two things. Also on slide six, it states that the development agreement requires compliance with city standards and has more strict standards for stormwater management, water quality, allowable land uses. So why do we need to annex this portion of the road? Stated by Tracy Bratton, Director of Land Development that serves for Caldwell County, per our ordinance, Caldwell County, we will not review the final plat concurrently. It requires a preliminary plat, construction plans, and then final plat with no overlap between reviews. Almost certainly, a TIA is going to be required, but based on the documents to date, that cannot be determined. So, again, why do we need to annex this? It seems like it's just to help the developer out. But I'll be speaking later at the public hearing for more. And I'm available to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Annie Donovan.
Hello, council. My name's Annie Donovan, and I'll be speaking later during the public hearing. But I want to go ahead and request that you vote no on ordinance 2024-27. If approved, the smart access developer will be given the green light to build a road connecting to the newly completed FM 110 to FM 1984. I heard an argument that this road would remove traffic from Highway 80, but that doesn't make any sense to me. There have been multiple studies on building roads over the years. And from what I understand, from the movie Field of Dreams, if you build it, they will come. And if you've ever seen that movie, after the baseball field is built, the ballplayers come. So what happens if you build a road? Will more traffic come? Will more wrecks happen? Will there be more crash fatalities? Will more road maintenance need to be completed at the expense of taxpayers? Just this weekend, an article by the San Marcos Daily Record quoted a study by Consumer Affairs from 2022 that rated San Marcos as having the second highest rate of worst drivers in the entire state of Texas. The city's night patrol commander, Sam Myers, is quoted stating that out of 16 fatal wrecks in 2022, three of those were commercial motor vehicles. Coincidentally, just this weekend, the San Marcos Police Department had to close the north-to-south turnaround at I-35 and Highway 80 to investigate a major crash. To quote a comment on the post on Facebook, they said, "Always accidents at this intersection." The Consumer Affairs studies state that San Marcos had the highest, second highest rate of driving fatalities with 22.34 deaths per 100,000 residents. A majority of the community stands firm in our conviction that the Access Logistics Park is not the right choice, neither for San Marcos nor the community and our neighbors. For over seven months last year, the community attended all the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings and all of the city council meetings leading up to the developers' withdrawal of their annexation request over a year ago. Here we are once again to tell you that we do not want or need this for our community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Josh Baselk.
Hello. I'm Josh Baselk, Luntan Algrida. Been a citizen of San Marcos for, I think, going about eight years now. Hope you all are doing well. It's good to see everybody. Wasn't exactly punning coming up in this order, so we're gonna roll with it. I'd like to talk a little trash here, but within regards to our city contract, of course. As most may or may not know, we've had a contract with TDS for quite some time now. And the basic premise of what I'm talking to today is for us to just take a look into, maybe look into what some other options are out there. Currently, I believe TDS has the contract through 2025. Correct me if my details are wrong. But the basic premise is that we would like to go out for RFP, or this is the basic idea. So I'm gonna read off a couple bullet points here. Hope this helps you get a baseline. We have a couple other people speaking as well. Our current contract and market changes. The contract with TDS said to expire in October 2025 with a five-year renewal option. This hasn't been open for bids since 2003. Recent market developments, including a new landfill opening in 2021, have introduced new competitors that may offer more competitive proposals. Potential price increase with RFP. The current provider has indicated, or at least I've heard, that the current pricing in the contract, if it is renewed without our... The price could increase if we don't renew a contract for them. Excuse me. I went off response here. However, this may increase the price of requests for proposals issued. While a price increase could occur, it may reflect the real cost of maintaining high-quality services and adapting to market changes. Number three, RFP recommendation. We recommend that the city council initiate an RFP process for the trash contract after new city staff have fully transitioned. This process will allow us to explore all available options and ensure we secure the best possible contract. Four, fiduciary duty and evaluation. As city leaders, there's a fiduciary duty to seek the best contracts, especially for critical services like waste management. And RFP can help evaluate the best overall value, balancing costs with service, quality, and other important factors. Five, comprehensive assessment criteria. The evaluation should go beyond just cost, considering service quality reliability, environmental impact, and the company's commitment to community engagement sustainability. These factors ensure that the selected provider meets the city's long-term goals and the community's needs. My argument for an RFP is an RFP process promotes competition, potentially leading to improved services and innovative solutions. It provides a transparent way to assess all options, making it more likely to find a provider that offers a better balance of cost, quality, and community benefits. Even with a potential price increase, the process could uncover a provider with superior sustainability practices or stronger community engagement aligning with the city's long-term interest. And at the end of the day, it's just been a long time. There's several companies that are around now. They're worth looking into. And I think we owe our constituents a good look at that. Thanks for your time.
And after Randy Bryan will be in this order, Jeremiah Pazana, Alfonso Cifuentes, Matthew Worthington, and Said Mosfegigana. And I'm sorry, I haven't gotten your name quite right yet, but I think we'll know... I think you'll know who it is. Randy Bryan is next.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to San Marcos. We're so glad you chose a great city. So we're glad that you are here. I am Randy Bryan. I'm from 728 Stagecoach Trail. Been a citizen of San Marcos since about 2000, right before the current trash contract was approved. I want to stand before you today to respectfully urge you to consider opening up an RFP for solid waste and recycling services since our current contract expires in October of 2025. As stewards of our city's resources, we have a fiduciary duty to secure the best possible options for all city contracts, especially one as significant as this. With a newly opened landfill in the area and increased competition in our region, now is an opportune time to take advantage of that, explore the market, and ensure that we're receiving the highest value for our community. This is not just about price. It's about finding a partner that aligns with our city's long-term goals. It's about prioritizing quality of service, reliability, environmental stewardship, and community engagement. It's about ensuring a comprehensive approach to waste management that benefits all residents. By opening up an RFP, you provide ample time for a thorough evaluation and a seamless transition when the contract expires in 14 months from now. It also demonstrates a commitment to transparency and good governance by exploring all available options. And most importantly, it fulfills our duty to the city and its residents by securing the best possible value for our hard-earned tax dollars. I urge you to embrace this opportunity for progress, open up the RFP, and let's find a partner that helps us build a cleaner, greener, and more sustainable San Marcos. Thank you so much for letting me come up and speak.
Our next speaker is Jeremiah Pazana.
Hi. Good evening, council. My name is Jeremiah. Long-term resident, fellow Bobcat. Much in line with Randy said, I just want to recommend that the council open up the bidding process for the currently offered by TDS. I guess it's been a while since about 2003. And so I just encourage the council to do so. I know we talked about fiduciary obligation, et cetera, for the betterment of our citizens. But again, I just encourage y'all to open up that process. I don't think that TDS values the community anymore. I think that's evident by the lack of participation. We used to see them a lot in the community, and now we don't. So again, I'd just like to encourage you to do that. On a side note, I just want to thank all y'all for y'all's services that y'all do here for the city. I know sometimes it's a thankless job. And so I just want to thank you for what y'all do. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Alfonso Cifuentes.
Good evening. Honorable Mayor, Council, and city staff. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. And you've heard a lot of just fiduciary duties and responsibilities of the city. And you've shown that that's been your roadmap. And we appreciate for all the good work you do for the citizens here. My name is Alfonso Cifuentes, and I'm the Municipal Manager for Republic Services. You see me now with a different uniform. It was formerly Central Texas Refuge. And almost a year ago, we were acquired by Republic Services. And it was a good move because now we have a lot more resources that we can definitely fulfill a lot of needs that this, the city and others can benefit from our resources. We greatly appreciate just your unwavering committee to your fiduciary responsibilities for the residents for the city of San Marcos. And evaluating all options for the city's solid waste and recycling contracting services under your leadership makes fiscal sense, given that the contract, as was stated many times, was last went out to bid before 2003. Our hope is, and shared by constituents and business leaders, is that in these challenging financial times, the city should remain prudent and steadfast in its directives to staff and eventually prepare for a request for proposals process that will enable San Marcos to see the best value for its residents before approving another long-term commitment with the same provider. On October 17th of 2023, at your city council work session, it was recommended by your staff to extend the current vendor's contract for another five years. Before you vote to accept the recommendation by staff, we want to assure the city of San Marcos that there are other viable options for fully integrated trash collection, recycling, organics, and landfill services. Therefore, we recommend the city extend it for one or two years so that the city staff has the ample time and resources to initiate a thorough request for proposals process. Even though Republic Service is your best option, we are proponents of an open and fair RFP process which will allow the city of San Marcos the opportunity to explore other competitors and other competitive options, excuse me, for the city's trash and recycling services. Recycling, composting, food waste, organics, diversion, and other components prioritized by your city can also be provided by Republic Services immediately. Being a leader in environmental services, our focus will be on providing your city the most complete set of solutions with a commitment to driving sustainability. We will be glad to present to you at your convenience a detailed presentation of our capabilities and available resources that can service a growing city like San Marcos. And in closing, I would like to thank you for your leadership and for allowing us to tell our story that we hope may include the city of San Marcos in our service family. Thank you for your consideration and for your service to our community.
Next is Matthew Worthington.
Good evening, good evening. My name is Matthew Worthington. I live in the Millbrook Park neighborhood here in San Marcos. I've lived here for 14 years now. Came here for two, and now look at me. Once you step in the river, that's what happens. But I do want to say I appreciate all of you all and the work that you do for the community. I really appreciate that. I want to say welcome to you as well. Love to have you as part of our community and look forward to working together out there in the community with you as well. I come also to echo the words of opening up the RFP for trash services. I think there's been some good... Plenty of good points laid out tonight. I know it's been a long time since that's been out to bid. There's been a lot of changes in the region. I know there's been a new landfill open and things like that. So a lot of new opportunities. And so I think it really does make... It's best to look at what options are available. And I really appreciate your guys' time and attention.
Hello. My name is Said Mosfegigana. Today, I was hesitant to come and talk to the city council because we did it for over the seven months. And we talked about the importance of discussing a ceasefire resolution regarding the genocide that happening in Palestine. And the city council and mayor decided to ignore us instead of paying attention to what your constituents want. So the purpose of citizen's comment is, you know what is important for your constituents and pay attention to it, but you decided to ignore us. And so when I come here and talk to you, I have a feeling that I am talking to a wall. Sometimes your faces do not, you know, has no difference with the picture on the wall. So I hope the next year we have a better mayor, better city council members that pay attention to the requests and demands of their constituents. And I hope that happens. Thank you.
Our next speakers are Eric West, Lydia Banda, Mark Aldape, and Joy Jungers.
Okay. My name's Eric West. I've lived here for about 12 years now. And over the last three years, I've had nothing but problems with the city of San Marcos Police Department. Handicap parking has to be enforced 24/7. We're adults. We go out at night. We have to have handicap parking. It's not we want it. We can't change our disability. I have to have an extra eight feet next to my van, or I don't get out. And when you don't enforce handicap parking, it sends a clear message to the citizens, oh, they're not enforcing it. We can park here. We can do what we want, even though it's breaking state statute law. So we have no protection now. That's a violation of our 14th Amendment and the ADA. I'm hoping I can work with you, sir, to resolve this problem. But I was about to resolve it through the U.S. Department of Justice. Because you can't violate people's rights. Criminals don't take a break between, you know, 9:00 and 5:00. You know, they don't operate on a schedule. People will park in handicapped anytime they want. It could be 7:00, 8:00, 9:00 at night. And when you tell the citizens that are handicapped you're not going to enforce it, how does that make you look to them? Like a caring city council? Or a non-caring city council? You have a lot of handicapped citizens that live in San Marcos. And frankly, from what I'm hearing, they're getting tired of being treated as second-class citizens. I don't think you'd like it. We definitely don't like it. Please, treat us as an equal. Just because we're handicapped doesn't make us less than anybody else. And it's not fair to us to be treated this way. All we want to do is live like any other citizen and have the same protections under the law. So I look forward to your phone call so that we can work this out. And welcome. Sorry to give you this mess. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lydia Banda.
Yes, we need a microphone to have you on recording. But we can offer you a microphone, so you can stay there.
Well, this is my first time being here. My name is Lydia Banda, and I've been disabled for the past 20 years. I've been living in San Marcos for the last 17 years. And I love San Marcos. But I do realize that it's like a college town. And a lot of these kids, I mean, they're reckless, and they don't care about crippled people. I mean, it's a shame, but I've come across that too many times. And I mean, it's a shame because, I mean, there they are, so young. Yeah, full of life. But then again, I mean, they don't know what's coming ahead of them. I mean, if they keep living their life recklessly, they might end up like me, crippled. Who knows? God forbid, right? But I mean, they just need to be watching their surroundings. But I mean, they just need to be watching their surroundings. And on Thorpe Lane, we definitely need some stoplight between Thorpe Lane and Springtown Way. Because I'm scared to go even to HEB because people are just driving reckless everywhere. And I mean, it's just, I mean, it's very hard for me to get my groceries done and stuff like that and there's other people in my neighborhood. I mean, and I've heard that in 2027, there's might be something done. By then, who knows? I might not even be alive because even crossing right there in Thorpe Lane is very dangerous.
Our next speaker is Mark Aldape.
I'm the son of Lydia Banda and as her son, I'm very worried about her crossing from Thorpe Lane and Springtown. I'm very cautious about her safety. I am like her, her first son and then she also has a daughter and we haven't talked much about her dau- her, my sister and her daughter. And I'm basically the only one helping her around the house and then it's just worrying about my mother's safety all the time, crossing that street really bugs me. So thank you for carrying me out.
Our next speaker is Joy Jungers.
Good evening. My name is Joy Jungers. I live at 305 Johnson Street in Martindale, Texas. I'm also a property owner at 316 Knox Street here in San Marcos. I'm here to try and encourage you to vote no against the ordinance 2024-27. The developer, the smart access developers requesting you annex land for their right-of-way, which will be dumping heavy truck traffic right onto little bitty FM 1984, essentially in the Foster's front yard. That is, that seems cruel and unusual punishment to me. Furthermore, the people of San Marcos are not going to benefit from this road. Martindale's not going to benefit from this road, Maxwell's not going to benefit, nobody's going to benefit from this road except for the heavy trucks going in and out of the smart access complex. So again, thank you for your time and I hope you vote no against this ordinance. Thank you.
Ms. Travenio, that's everyone on my list. Is that complete? Okay. So we will close the citizen comment portion and council. We are now to our consent agenda. The following ordinances, resolutions, and other items numbered one through seven may be acted upon by one motion. Unless someone pulls one of these items, they will all be done together. Counsel, is there anything that anybody wants to pull from the consent agenda? I'll need the number.
If there's none, the mayor, I'll make a motion to approve items one through seven on the consent agenda.
All right. We have a motion for consent agenda. Is there a second? Motion seconded from Mr. Gonzalez.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
All right, then that takes us to item seven in the public hearing portion of our program, I'm sorry, item eight.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against Resolution 2024-137R, adopting the Community Development Block Grant Action Plan that provides for the allocation of $1,405,998 in CDBG entitlement funds for Program Year 2024-2025, authorize the city manager or designate to act as the official representative of the city in matters related to the CDBG program and action plan, and declare an effective date and consider approval of Resolution 2024-137R.
Presentation.
Okay. I'm Carol Griffith, Council of the Community Development Board. This evening I'll present information on the applications received for the Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program Year 2024-2025. The information presented this evening and the draft action plan was reviewed at a public hearing on June 4th and posted for public review June 7th through July 9th. And comments received so far are summarized as follows. Lisa Arseneau provided some ideas prior to the public comment period on spending CDBG funds. Some of these ideas revolved around restoration of three buildings in the Dunbar neighborhood. The other ideas were for beautification of recreation areas that would also enhance safety. Carrie Jones stated that San Marcos does not have a facility or proper resources for adults with special needs. She has an adult son that she must take to other cities for services. There needs to be a place to go or proper transportation to take people to other cities for services. Adam Holt stated his support of CDBG funding and that his agency had applied as a CDBG public service subrecipient. That's actually, he's actually a project subrecipient. He stated, "There are little to no services for people with substance dependency issues because San Marcos is a small town." And he noted that the 2024 point in time count showed an increase in homelessness. Zachariah Alnatur stated that the city needs more mental health services. Steven Suan Floyd stated support of the Southside Community Service, the Southside Community Center, receiving the full amount requested. Receiving more money than the recommended amount would help provide more services. Eric West stated that he's in favor of the Thorpe Lane project. He states it is long overdue and important to recognize the issues that have affected the disability community. He and other citizens have spoken up about the need for ADA on Thorpe Lane in the past. A discussion by council at that time, at the public hearing on June 4th included coordination of the Thorpe Lane sidewalk project with the text dot road improvements, and so that is under coordination. Update on the status of the current housing rehab program. Discussion on the need for resources for families with title issues and discussion on prior allocations and allocations from other cities for emergency assistance. That's our summary. Next slide. This year, San Marcos has been allocated $766,063 in CDBG funding from HUD. During a work session on April 16th, council directed the reallocation of CDBG funds of $639,927 from various projects from prior years. So we have quite a bit of funding that we're putting into projects now moving forward. That funding will be added to this year's allocation, so the total is more than 1.4 million. So I just wanted to reiterate, each year, no more than 15% can be spent on public services and no more than 20% on administration or planning. And we do spend that maximum every year. So the amount that we are moving forward from prior years can only be spent on projects. Next slide. To be eligible for consideration, each proposed program or project must meet a variety of requirements set in place by HUD regulations. This year, six eligible applications were received for public services and five for projects. All eligible applications were reviewed by a staff committee on criteria that are shown on this slide and the next one. Next slide. This slide continues the evaluation criteria. Applications were evaluated on need, justification, impact and cost effectiveness, implementation and measurable outcomes, and past performance or letters of reference and council priorities. Next slide. In addition, each member of the staff committee performed a risk assessment scoring for each application. All proposals were considered low risk, but within that category, the housing rehab program scored highest because of its complexity and the Outsiders Anonymous application scored second highest because it's a new program. I was asked to give a brief update on our housing rehab program. We are moving forward and I forgot to look up numbers, I'm sorry, but I can tell you some anecdotal information. We have approximately six or seven houses that are currently being renovated, they're under construction. We have approximately 20 that are in the process of permitting or in that in-between period where they've received their permits. We have quite a few of those and they're just scheduling. So we have the contractors working with the applicants to schedule times and then also getting materials in and that sort of thing. Our projected finish date for CDBG funding is September 30th. We think we'll spend all of it by then and have those houses done. So we look forward to having that complete. I'm happy to answer any other questions. We do feel like we're finally moving, so that's good. Okay, next, let's see, where are we at? Yep, next slide. Okay, the amounts requested go on for several slides and they total that 1.4 million. First, here are the requests for public services funding, which is limited to 114,909. I'll provide a brief description for each application since we're having a public hearing today. The majority of the staff committee desired to fund all the public service applications due to the level of need for each program in the City of San Marcos. The first three programs provide intensive assistance that can change the trajectory of people's lives and the last three provide emergency assistance for pressing immediate needs. So they really felt like both had some value. On this slide, the first one is court-appointed special advocates. This is, request is for partial funding of staff and utilities for CASA, which trains volunteers who are voices for children in the foster system in the best interests in terms of their medical, educational, mental health, housing, and long-term needs. Next is the Greater San Marcos Youth Council's Family and Youth Success Program. They have a waitlist for this program and desire to expand services to more San Marcos families. The, the program is geared toward families with children ages six to 17 and it's part of the National Family Support Network Program. Third is Hayes Caldwell Women's Center Family Violence Shelter Program. This, the funding requested is to pay a small portion of the salary for two of their shelter staff who provide direct services to victims of family violence. And then they would also like to be able to provide two months' rent for the approximately 13 families as they transition out of the shelter and into their own home or apartment. The last three programs requesting funding were mostly for direct payments to people for emergency services. Southside also requested a small portion of a case manager's salary. These programs were seen as very similar and the committee recommends funding the three agencies equally at $12,000 apiece. Next slide. Next, the Planning and Development Services Department requested the usual 20% maximum to pay for the staff salaries to run the CDBG program and requested $280,000 to pay for home repair. The housing rehab funding will not be used for staff. It's used for the soft costs like inspections and title insurance and then for the hard costs specifically for the rehab of the homes. The staff committee recommends funding administration at the 20% and then funding housing rehab at $260,470 in order to have funding for additional projects. So I slimmed it down a little bit. Next slide. Finally, other project applications were received from city departments, the school district, and one agency. Last year, Swift Memorial Park was awarded partial funding of $84,000 with the expectation it would be back this year, which it is, to request the rest of the funding needed. So this completes, this provides the complete funding for the project that was partially funded last year to install turf, to replace mulch, install, install a shade structure, resurface the basketball court, add ADA access entries, and add a bottle filler fountain.
Would you remind us where that park is, please?
I'm so sorry.
It's in...
Can somebody tell us?
Barrio Pascala, I think, because I looked, I looked it up.
Barrio Pascato?
Yes, Wallace Edition.
Wallace Edition, okay. Next one is the city's project for the Thorpe Lane sidewalk. This will be funding for design and construction of sidewalk improvements, including ADA accessible upgrades along Thorpe Lane from Robbie Lane to Loop 82. The amount requested was approximate based on prior experience and so it has been cut in favor of funding other things. The staff committee felt like it could be cut this year slightly and then funding added in the future if it was needed. So please note that if this project is designed using CDBG funding, it needs to be implemented using CDBG funding. So if they need a little bit more in the, in the future, we will be asking for that. Outsiders Anonymous outsider housing program is a little bit unusual in that it's an agency, but their request qualifies for kind of a special exception for CDBG funding. They were asking for partial funding for interim housing for people in recovery from substance addiction. It will either support acquisition or leasing and configuration of a living facility for approximately 10 people. The reason CDBG can pay for this is that per the description, it qualifies as a homeless facility and is specifically for recovery from substance addiction. And so that, that, there's a line in the CDBG regs that allows that as a project, not as a public service. San Marcos Consolidated Independent School District requested funding for, for the Barrio Pascato Fitness Trail for purchase and installation of 10 stations of outdoor exercise equipment along a one-mile loop on SMC ISD property. The loop follows Broadway, Staples, De Zavala, and Highway 123 and the equipment would be available to the public for use at all times. Next slide. Staff recommends approval of the funding allocations and adoption of the 2024-2025 CDBG action plan as presented. Next, a public hearing will be held, then staff is requesting council's final decision on funding allocations and adoption of the 2024-2025 CDBG action plan. And this concludes my presentation.
Okay, and so next I will open the public hearing. Signed up to speak already is Eric West. If anyone else in the room would like to speak far against or about this item, if you would let us know or start lining up at the podium. Mr. West, you're first.
Okay, thank you. My name is Eric West. I've lived here for about 15 to 12 years.
Sir, would you give us your address for...
Okay, I'm sorry.
We don't need it for citizen comment, what we do for public hearings.
It's 503 Springtown Way, Apartment 115, San Marcos, Texas. Now, I know I come here a lot and say, this is a problem, this is a problem, this is a problem. We're here now with the chance of moving forward with Thorpe Lane. That would go a long way to the handicapped community to show them that you guys are serious about helping them. Because 10 years ago, we tried to talk to you about Thorpe Lane and we were ignored. So I really want to move forward. I think if we move forward, I can get more citizens involved with things because they just don't believe that you're going to do anything. They have to see it. So I really would appreciate if we could move forward with Thorpe Lane. That would go a long way at helping me get more citizens behind you. And that's all I needed to say. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to speak far against or about this item? If not, I will close the public hearing and I await a motion.
Motion to approve, mayor.
Motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Mendoza, that is for approval. Counsel, questions for Ms. Griffiths? Anyone?
I, I just want to make a comment about...
Mr. Mendoza?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm so sorry. I, I will say it is a different council that has been here before. We are definitely proponents of ADA everywhere around the city. I, I can let you guys know that there's no doubt. We've had meetings and talked about this on a personal side and I am a huge proponent, especially for the Thorpe Lane. I live in Rio Vista, so I consistently see what's going on, especially with our oldest and largest affordable housing being right there and the building. I completely understand and I appreciate you coming here, sir.
Mayor, I, I'm sorry, this is out of turn. I just needed to say that...
I'll need you to get, talk in the microphone, please.
Yes, sir.
Now, normally we don't do that, but we're gonna this time.
I apologize. It's just something that came up in my brain, a little slow. It's Eric West again. Thorpe Lane has a place on it where the sidewalk slants into the street at 19% grade. That's more than 18-wheelers can take. There's 6% or 7%. That's why this is so important and, and thank you. I, I do agree with what you were saying.
Anything else?
I, I appreciate that. Basically, it's just, we are working. We are definitely working and we're very happy to have this project done. We've been pushing for it and we're very proud of everybody getting it done and so we are working on it, I can assure you. So thank you for coming up and speaking to us. It's very important that we hear from you. A lot of us don't spend time on Thorpe Lane and I admit, I try as often as I can, but it's good to be reminded of why we need to focus on that area. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Then we're ready to vote. Ms. Travenio?
All right. Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
And on to item nine.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against Ordinance 2024-27, annexing into the city approximately 7.553 acres of land, inclusive a portion of county right-of-way in Caldwell County, Texas, generally located on the western side of FM 1984, approximately 4,600 feet northeast of the intersection between State Highway 80 and FM 1984, and approximately 150 feet northeast of the intersection between FM 1984 and Foster Boulevard, case number AN-24-03. Access logistics, including procedural provisions, and provide an effective date and consider approval of Ordinance 2024-27 on the first of two readings.
Presentation.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. The subject property is part of a plat for a future roadway within the Access Smart Terminal Development Agreement, and per the agreement, the owner is requesting annexation to bring the road right-of-way into the city limits and construct the road to city standards. Next slide. The road is part of the first phase of Access, which includes the extension of utilities to the area. The road will remain with a placeholder zoning district of future development, and if or when the adjacent properties are zoned, the roadway will be zoned along with them. Next slide. The road is shown on the city's thoroughfare plan, which is the graphic on the right side of the screen. It's within the transportation master plan, and it's a conceptual road that's intended to offer relief to State Highway Eighty. It's shown in, also conceptually in the development agreement as the main route for heavy truck traffic to access FM one-ten. And we'll have a graphic to show the whole road in a couple slides. The final road alignment is the result of engineering design, and as we discussed at our last meeting, a development agreement was not, a development agreement amendment was not necessary in order to make the modifications required to align this roadway the way it is shown. If the road crosses FM nineteen eighty-four in the future, it would be constructed on land that's currently owned by the Access developer. A question was asked and submitted to staff a little bit earlier today about the potential extension and whether it would potentially force people out of their homes. We do know that there are homes across the street. The answer to that question is no. The developer has to own the land if they're going to do any construction on the property, so they would keep the construction constraints if it's extended across the street to property that they own. And if the roadway continues across FM nineteen eighty-four, it could actually act as a buffer from the proposed industrial uses on that property. Next slide. Here's a snapshot of the plat. In the green circle, you can see the area that is currently within city limits. It's about three-quarters of the road, a little bit less, and about the remaining quarter or so is in the ETJ, and the applicant's requesting annexation at this time. Next slide. We've received a handful of questions regarding this annexation and have provided answers. A summary of the responses are as follows. Following annexation, the developer will pay for the roadway construction and will build to city standards. The road is intended to accommodate future heavy vehicle traffic associated with the development, and the development agreement includes a requirement for signage that encourages truck traffic to use this new road to access FM one-ten. It'll also serve as an additional access point for all drivers wishing to access FM one-ten. This is not a road that's limited to the Access development. It's a public roadway, and anybody can use it. City staff are reviewing plans for watershed protection along with the plat, and the associated development agreement has more strict standards than what is typically required in the development code for that watershed protection plan. I wanted to add that we do have a traffic impact analysis submitted. It's in our permitting system now, and it includes only very high-level hypothetical trip generation information, because we don't know the end users at Smart Terminal Access. We don't know exactly how many trips would be anticipated, so they've used some general numbers for our review. And then there was an additional question that was submitted again this afternoon about the easements that are adjacent to the roadway, and these easements are not within the right-of-way, so they are not being annexed as part of this annexation request, and they must be maintained by the property owner because they are on private property. The question was also asked about whether the easement were to extend across FM one-eighteen, and the response from our engineers is that engineering design for drainage can change from property to property, so we would not anticipate that the road cross-section would look exactly the same across the street if it were to extend. But we don't have that information at this time. We're only dealing with the property in question on the maps. Next slide. Today, we're holding the public hearing and seeking action on first reading of an ordinance to annex this approximately seven-acre land for a future road right-of-way. Next slide. And staff recommends approval as presented. That concludes my presentation.
All right, then I will open the public hearing. And for the folks who are signed up, in this order is Mary Beth Harper, Joanne Salas, Noah Brock, and Annie Donovan. And then after those four folks have spoken, I'll ask if there's anyone else here who wishes to speak on this item.
My name's Mary Beth Harper. My address is two zero zero five seven San Marcos Highway. It's actually, I'm in the Martindale ETJ. I've been coming to San Marcos City Council meeting since two thousand and fifteen, when the Smart Terminal was first proposed. Okay, SMART stands for San Marcos Air, Rail, and Truck Terminal. Now it's just a truck terminal called Access Logistics Park. I've been against this whole heavy industry parking, a project because of its closeness to the San Marcos River. Also, there's increased truck traffic, noise, and light pollution, and increased potential for flooding. The seven point five acres that Logistics wants to annex in San Marcos city limits is for the purpose of building a four-lane truck route to connect FM one-ten on the west to Loop, to FM nineteen eighty-four. That's Reedville Road on the east. Both Loop one-ten and nineteen eighty-four are two-lane roads, two-lane, two-lane, four-lane. Reedville Road was built many, many years ago to accommodate farmers hauling their crops to the gens or to the grain elevator. It cannot sustain heavy truck traffic. Part of the proposed roadways are already in San Marcos city limits, but it's in Caldwell County. This part would be built to higher San Marcos stormwater drainage standards. The seven point five acres is already owned by Access and is in the San Marcos ETJ. If this is not annexed by the city, that roadway would be built to Caldwell County standards. Caldwell County could not be able to build nor maintain a higher standard of roadway. My main opposition, opposition to this roadway is where it intersects with nineteen eighty-four. It's too close to existing homes and neighborhoods. Why don't a truck route move further north toward the railroad tracks? It's perfectly good place to move and reduce that curve. The people in these homes moved out here for the peace and quiet of country living, not for trucks. Surprisingly, I am for the annexation of the land for truck route, but further, but further north. Let the taxpayers of San Marcos pay to maintain this road and the very expensive sewer line that will serve this area.
Our next speaker is Joanne Salas.
Good evening, I'm Joanne Salas. I live at one fifteen Turkey Hollow in San Marcos. And I'll keep it super brief. I'm just here to oppose the annexation of this land for a right-of-way. I think that that road that's gonna connect nineteen eighty-four to one-ten is only gonna be used by the Smart Access Development, that it has no benefit for either the residents of San Marcos or the residents of Martindale. It just feels to me like we're bending over backwards to accommodate this huge industrial development that is only gonna harm the city in ways that have been talked about over and over again at the city council for the past year and a half or so. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Noah Brock, followed by Annie Donovan.
Good evening, council. My name's Noah Brock, and I live at three three five five FM nineteen eighty-four in Maxwell. There is no reason to annex this land right now. Show me a checklist that says that this is a good piece of property to bring into the city. Tell me how the city benefits from this annexation. Typically, when a right-of-way is annexed, it happens at the same time as other plats. These other plats would include plans for development. In this case, we just have plans for a road. That's it. Just a road. I could not find any record in the past ten years where the city of San Marcos annexed a right-of-way without an adjoining plat. None, except for ones that the city actually owned themselves. You would be setting a precedent here. The plat drawings in the annexation application align a variable with public drainage easement with a residential property across from, across FM nineteen eighty-four. The plan for that eas- if that plan for that easement continues across nineteen eighty-four, it is lined up straight with a residential property, multiple permanent houses, including mobile homes behind that. So what Amanda was saying earlier is there's gonna be a zigzag in the easement to kind of curve around this corner of a residential property? This road was lined up four hundred and fifty feet to the north prior to this. This wouldn't have been an issue, but it was conveniently moved over to the edge of the newly-owned property that this developer just purchased, probably to get it over on the edge of their property so they're not splitting part of their development. Talking about drainage, I've handed out the Phase One preliminary plat that shows potential lot lines as well as all the easements. Notice the rather large regional detention pond in the middle? If that's what it takes to contain a hundred-year flood in this area, what will happen when we get a larger flood? Notice how this proposed road affects the blue boundary as it spreads down the drainage easement on the sides? Where will that water go? This is the first plat, so where are all these studies that are required for the first plat? Why isn't this map included in the packet? Why did I have to give it to you? There are too many unanswered questions for you to pass this annexation now. This only helps the developer. Vote no. And I'm available to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Annie Donovan.
Hello, council. My name's Annie Donovan, and I live at thirty-three fifty-five FM nineteen eighty-four in Maxwell, less than half a mile from Franklin Mountain San Marcos's annexation request for a one-hundred-and-twenty-foot four-lane right-of-way road. I'm asking you to vote no on this ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven. The negatives for this road annexation outweigh the positives for all parties affected except the developer. As proposed, the road is directly adjacent to nearly forty residences off Foster Boulevard and Colorado Drive, and less than a third of a mile to more, including my own. If built, the road noise pollution levels will increase dramatically due to heavy traffic redirected from FM ten to nineteen eighty-four. It is scientifically proven that increased road noise causes sleep disruption, headaches, high blood pressure, elevated levels of stress, increased risk of heart attack, diabetes, and stroke. Just noise alone will promote negative health effects to locals living right here. Previously, it has been stated by both city staff and the developer that there will be signage to redirect truck traffic back onto one-ten. Can someone point out to me on any of the maps how truck traffic can safely make a U-turn to go back to one-ten? Looking at slide six in the presentation, it clearly states that the road's purpose is to, quote, "offer an alternate route to State Highway Eighty for all drivers accessing one-ten." The quiet part not being said is that nineteen eighty-four is the road that will be the true alternate route. The presentation doesn't mention or clarify if the truck traffic coming from I-ten and Lulling will skip one-ten and instead take nineteen eighty-four to utilize the proposed road to Access, Axis. Nineteen eighty-four is not built to sustain heavy truck traffic. It's a county road with the gross vehicle weight limit set to fifty-eight thousand four-hundred-and-twenty pounds. A full semi-truck weighs eighty thousand. Not only will this annexation increase traffic, it will also break our county road faster. Based on public records requests, it is clear that the county cannot maintain a road that sustains heavy truck traffic. So who thinks that they'll be able to maintain nineteen eighty-four, the road that is really going to be damaged by this? Amanda Hernandez has told us that this road benefits residents in the area. How will we benefit if nineteen eighty-four is filled with potholes from truck traffic? How will we benefit from increased road noise causing negative health effects? We don't need this. Additionally, the residents in the area, including myself, do not pay taxes to the city. If annexed, taxpayers of San Marcos will pay taxes on a road that benefits non-taxpayers and a developer that doesn't have a build-out plan. Who does this road benefit? The developer. Who loses if this annexation is passed? All of us. I urge you to listen. We love our community just as much as you do. Do the right thing and vote no on this ordinance. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? If you'll go to the podium, and we'll need your name and address for the record. And you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. My name's Diane McGregor. I live at one forty Ladybug Lane in Martindale, Texas. I don't know if you all have driven out there. Do you all drive out there? I've lived in that area for over twenty years, and I use nineteen eighty-four a lot. If you're coming from, I mean, I'm assuming the trucks won't be prohibited from driving south on nineteen eighty-four. They're gonna have the back and forth between one-ten and nineteen eighty-four. And then to get to one-thirty, they're gonna go down Highway Eighty, but that is not a good intersection, Highway Eighty and nineteen eighty-four. If you drive, please drive out there and look at, at it. You're going up a steep thing, and then you gotta turn onto a one-lane. You got two lanes going towards San Marcos, but it's only one lane going east. That is a problem. That whole intersection would need to be refa- reformed. It's not good. And that tra- truck traffic between the construction of all the mess that they're gonna make out there and the, uh, the transportation of whatever goods they're gonna be doing, I don't know what's gonna happen out there, but it's gonna be a mess. And it's right, I could spit on it from my rooftop. That's how close it is. And it's, I beg you to go out there and drive around and look at it. Traffic has already increased tremendously since they widened one, uh, Highway Eighty. Please go out and look. Don't pass this ordinance, please. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? If not, I will close the public hearing, and I await a motion on item nine.
Of to deny.
Was that Mr. Scott? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Um, I heard Mr. Gonzalez on that one first. Discussion.
Um, I'm, we've been here a lot about this, and I understand there's couple positive aspects for the, uh, part being built out there for the city as far as tax base, but to be honest with you, um, if it was like an HEB, I'd probably say yes all day long, you know, because that's things we need as a community, neighborhood community. But our, we've been dealing with traffic issues for a long time. We got so much farther to go before they're even gonna become close to maneuverable. So to add more trucks and, I mean, I drive out the way all the time. It's just a nightmare. It just irritates me to the day, you know, and it's, it irritates me, and I'm pretty calm, so, right? I can imagine what every day people, community back and forth would be like, so. I just don't think it's good right now, um, and I just don't think it's necessary, so I'm gonna vote against it.
Let's see. Ms. Garza, Mr. Gonzalez?
I don't know who is first, but...
You can go next.
I, I feel the same way. I think maybe someday, but right now is not the time. I don't see the benefit for San Marcos at all on doing this. At this time, I think I'm gonna be voting no.
Ms. Garza?
Right, so, um, I was just curious if staff could address some of the concerns that we just heard regarding the concern that truck traffic is gonna be routed, like rerouted, and like the, um, our neighbors amplifying the, like, the current state of nineteen, was it nineteen eighty-four? That would be, I mean, they're saying it would be the alternate route, and that it's just like not built for that? Like, I, I'm wondering, like, uh, what's the staff's perception of that, of those observations and statements?
Sure, I can respond to that. The development agreement indicates that there have to be signs placed on this new roadway which direct traffic to FM one-ten. So this would be when we have a future user and the, the property is built, and the truck is coming out that main driveway, that there would be a sign across the street that says, "Hey, trucks, go this way. FM one-ten is this way. IH thirty-five is this way." Rerouting, so if a truck turns in the other direction, can they make a U-turn? Probably not. The road won't be wide enough. They would have to pull into another driveway. We can't limit vehicles from driving on nineteen eighty-four. We just can't do that. It's a public road. Similar to this, will be a public road. But as far as nineteen eighty-four as it exists today...
But as far as nineteen eighty-four as it exists today, I can't imagine that it will always exist as it does today. If I were a truck driver, I probably wouldn't want to drive on nineteen eighty-four, but again, they can. But if we could maybe go to an aerial photograph, I don't know if it's going to be helpful or not. As the smart terminal project develops, state law says that we have to also annex roadways, which means that as we are annexing smart terminal, we will start annexing nineteen eighty-four and it'll actually become a city road as well. So we may, as a city, or the developer, if their traffic impact analysis indicates, they may have to do some upgrades to nineteen eighty-four to kind of help alleviate that. But at this time, we don't have any end users, so we don't actually know what the impacts will be, if it will be a warehouse that has trucks in and out all day or if it will be something that doesn't have the high traffic volume. We just don't know that at this point. And this is only, I guess, just to reiterate, annexation of the road so they can build a single road cross-section to city standards that would become a city roadway. And we don't have any other development applications in process at this time. We have the subsequent watershed protection plan, public improvement construction plans, but no actual development applications for adjacent properties.
I have a question. If we deny the annexation, does that mean they cannot build this road?
They could still build the road. They are working with the county as well because this is in process and it's not guaranteed until council approves on second reading. So they have been in conversations with the county to determine what that would look like if they have to construct into separate jurisdictions.
So they can still build the road and they would not have to build it to city standards?
They would not have to.
But at some point in the future, if we were to annex both sides of it, then we're responsible for it and at some point bringing it up to city standards, which will be on our dime, not theirs, correct?
If we are to annex even one side of the road, the entire road becomes ours. We don't have to do both sides. Whether or not we would be responsible for the financing of the improvements in the future would depend on a traffic impact analysis, but typically, we would be involved in that financing of that construction.
It would cost us something somewhere along the line, I suspect.
Right, where at this time, the developer is responsible for the cost of the construction.
Okay.
So then I'm curious as to what, um, uh, like, having heard that our neighbor who spoke earlier, I believe her name is Annie? Like, I wonder what their thoughts are after having heard that. I can't see, like, the titty chambers. I don't know who's still there, but if they're still there, I'd be curious to hear, like, kind of what their feedback is for that, for what was just explained.
Hello, I'm Annie Donovan. I live at thirty-three fifty-five FM nineteen eighty-four. In response to the question about if the developer can still build even though the roadway may not be annexed into the city, we have pulled public records requests and we have seen emails regarding the developer. From what I understand, has already tried. And Caldwell County denied their application because they have to have a preliminary plat, final plat, um, construction, a traffic impact analysis, like, all of these things upfront. And so therefore, essentially, they've kind of like hit this roadblock. So it definitely would be more difficult to build in the county. Also, in the email I read earlier today from a records request, Caldwell County was stating that they would more than likely require a municipal utility district as well, which they would have to apply to create. I hope that answers your question.
I've got a small question for you. Are you the only one to receive that email?
Um, so no one, I have been pulling public records requests. I'd be happy to send you any of anything.
But to forward it to city staff or planning?
Um, so it was sent to, I believe, Julia Cleary forwarded it. I don't know the exact details of the email of who sent it where, but I'd be happy to send it to you and all of the council members if you'd like that.
In fairness, it'd be good for the planning zoning also to be aware of the emails such as that one.
Okay. Yeah, I can do that.
I just might follow up question to that for the staff is whenever you're, like, kind of working through all this, to what extent are you talking to, like, the other entities that we, um, are trying to imagine would come in the picture? Based on, like, whether we approve or this, or like, not approve stuff? Like, to what extent does our city staff engage with, like, Caldwell and whatnot?
Well, it kind of depends. So if, in this instance, where we have a plat that's crossing jurisdictions, we have an inter-local agreement with the county that outlines exactly what we have to do. There is a review of the plat by city and by the county in that case. If this were to be annexed, if any land were to be annexed, then the jurisdiction for review lies solely on the city. So we're the only ones responsible for review because it's our jurisdiction. But where we have that overlap, we do work with the counties on these reviews. Now, we can't change and don't change our processes or their processes. So, you know, Ms. Donovan mentioned a process that the county outlined in an email. Any property developing in the county has to follow the county processes. And it sounds like they do things a little bit different than we do in the city, which is not uncommon. But we do work with them on our reviews and try to coordinate and have conversations with them about what's going on in their jurisdiction, but we do have some authority in ETJ.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful to me just to kind of understand, um, to what extent we're like communicating with other folks who may eventually, um, or currently being, like, looped into this conversation in some capacity or another.
I'm confused about a few things. And one of them is why anybody would come down nineteen eighty-four if they were coming from I-ten. I would think they would come down Highway eighty. I, that, I got lost on that one. Is there a requirement that they access, like, for subdivisions, you gotta have two routes of ingress egress, et cetera, et cetera? Is there a requirement that they have a, an access, a point of ingress egress on nineteen eighty-four? As in, if there wasn't FM one-ten, they would only have eighty. And if there's some kind of accident, whatever, on eighty and you can't go either way, I assume they'll have multiple curb cuts along eighty somewhere along the line. But that they would need to, a way out, a way for their, their people there to get out. But they do have direct access to FM one-ten, correct?
Yes, and some of that depends on their lot layout.
Yeah.
They have, every lot in the city of San Marcos has to have access to a public street. So it'll depend, you know, if for some reason they made all these lots facing nineteen eighty-four, then that's where their access would be. But the exhibit that Mr. Brock handed out, it is something that we have that we've just been reviewing. It's not finalized, which is why it's still kind of in this preliminary form. Most of these are going to have access on this particular roadway. There's only one access point, I believe, that would even be available on Highway eighty. And it's that little sliver that comes down on the east of Mr. Onheiser's property. On the other side, there's some flood plain right there, so I wouldn't anticipate that we have a driveway there. So most of the driveways will front on this road. And if tech staff would give them...
Will front on this road? This road being eighty or this road being nineteen eighty-four?
This road being the one that we're proposing for annexation today.
The main road? The main road that's gonna go through the middle of the park, it looks like.
Yes, ma'am. I would anticipate most of the driveways will access this road.
I would, I, I, I agree that that's probably what they intend. But the thing is, I'm looking at this, I know it's a public road. I'm looking at this as almost like an internal road to the development and making sure that there's a way from that road to get off property, if you will. But let me ask my question again, because I think we skipped over it. Do they have direct access to FM one-ten? Or will they?
They have, they have frontage. I don't know if they've negotiated curb cuts.
Okay, but they will have access. They can, this road will...
Will provide that access if they don't get curb cuts, yes.
Either, either terminate or cross FM one-ten.
Correct. And that would be the, the leftmost portion of the, what's on the screen there is FM one-ten.
Right. So they don't need the access to FM nineteen eighty-four in order to get from Energy Parkway to get someplace else, to get out of the business park?
Correct. They could use this proposed roadway to access FM one-ten.
They've got one-ten and they've got eighty. But yeah, I look at this now and I'm looking at the basically trapezoid shape of this and there's not gonna be a bunch of, um, um, routes in and out of, um, eighty. Are there any?
There's, there's one sliver of land that goes down and touches State Highway eighty.
Looks like there's two.
Correct. There's the one at the corner of FM one-ten and Highway eighty, but that wouldn't be conducive for a connection, for a driveway connection. So the one that may be conducive would be the, the one on the other side.
Are the dotted lines on this map roadways? What, the double dotted, what are they?
The dotted lines appear to be proposed lots. The blue lines appear to be proposed easements or floodplains.
Double dotted li- lines? I don't think so, because there's one that just ends at the property line. Uh, I'm saying dotted, I should say dashed. Because they're single dashed and there's double.
Are you talking about the red or a different color?
No, I'm talking about the black.
The black, okay. So there's, there's the black one that loops across below, south of the roadway and that one would be the, the ETJ line. And then there's the one that makes that trapezoidal shape. That's city limit boundary currently. And there might be...
Do you have a copy of this that was handed out to us? Because that's what I'm looking at.
I have it here, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Um, if we could go to, if we could go up maybe three or four slides to the zoning map, that might shed some light on some of the overlays. Because what you're looking at here is a preliminary plat. It's got a lot of information on it. It's very technical. But if you look here, you can kind of see, if you're looking at this...
Yeah.
That is, you can see that same shape in the brown, which is the edge of the zoning district, which is the edge of the city limits.
Yeah. Having this map, if we'd had it in the packet, would have been great. I'm not... I can see who did it. I'm not sure the source of this. Uh, are there council members? Mr. Mendoza?
Uh, thank you, mayor. So, um, I've driven down nineteen eighty-four, let's see, at least three times every week for the past... I'm forty-two years old, so let's go ahead and just be generic and say I've done it for the past, be safe, thirty-five years. I have lost my cousin Max in two thousand and eight to the corner of Highway eighty and nineteen eighty-four. Coming from San Marcos, getting hit by a drunk driver on his way to one of the, um, areas off Martindale that you can go on tube. We have all known somebody who has died on nineteen eighty-four or Highway eighty because of bad drivers. There has been a relief since we've had the left-hand lane turning on nineteen eighty-four from eighty and the lane that goes to the right to help out with that. I am glad one-ten is in existence to relieve some of that traffic, especially from the heavy trucks. This is anticipating what may be happening. I don't see any bad thing, especially this is their property, about allowing alternative routes, especially since we've got people and it's not our responsibility. We can't control how fast somebody drives on Highway eighty or nineteen eighty-four, what they're doing. But again, we've all known people who have died or been in accidents on that road. This is another way, of course, until something else gets built, Lord knows what that's gonna be because we're not clairvoyant here. We can't predict what they're gonna do. We can take guesses and that's actually not right either. That's not fair to anybody. But what we do know now is there's deadly accidents. We do know that there are people that are using this road, Highway eighty now, especially with the access to one-ten. They're being responsible and avoiding the inside roads of San Marcos. That's what we're trying to do here, from what I can understand. That's what I'd like to see done here. I am not happy with how close it's built to, um, the buildings across. I don't know how that can get fixed, but I'm not so anti against it because I know this will save lives one or another. We've seen it of how this will alleviate the bad traffic that comes. We just can't control, I'm sorry, we can't control somebody drinking and driving on that road because of everything that goes out to Highway eighty. I would hope that my colleagues would consider this as just trying to get ahead of the game here. You know, I wish we would have had one-ten fifteen years ago. And it would have been great. We wouldn't have seen all the crap that we see going on now. I just want you guys to consider what's gonna be coming and how that's gonna be and just maybe alleviate traffic. Lord knows, we're gonna see a boost in Luling that's happening. We're seeing Maxwell converting into municipality pretty soon. We're seeing everything bump up. This is just another way for us to relieve traffic from that horrendous intersection of eighty and nineteen eighty-four.
Hi, mayor. Thanks. I, um, Mr. Mendoza hit several of my points I was gonna make. I spent a lot of time out there and I've actually met the Fosters. I've talked to him about this, a specific location of the road. I too have some concerns about exactly how close it is to them being directly across the street. But overall, a road, a thoroughfare connecting eighty-four and one-ten is gonna alleviate some issues. If you leave Reedville and you wanna go to one-ten and go around, you will be able to come down now and avoid the eighty-four and, and eighty intersection and the one-ten eighty intersection and go straight to one-ten. Something is gonna happen out there. And it may as well be under our authority. I do wish this wasn't directly across the street from them. Do we suspect that there could potentially be a lighted intersection there at some point?
I'm getting nods from my engineer behind me.
I saw him, I saw him nodding back there. You know, it's gonna end up being needed, but I hate to have that happen to the Fosters that happen right across the street. They're gonna have a light that, you know, it's, it's gonna get pretty chaotic there for them. And there is quite a few residents there. And so the location is not ideal. I would love to see them, even if they shifted it even fifty or a hundred yards farther down on eighty-four, but they're probably trying to save a little land to make that little parcel, that little triangle, not so small that it's usable. I'm assuming is what, that they're kind of creating a lot on the north side of the avenue in between that little division there where they got, what they call it lot six, I guess. I'm gonna be in support of it. I would love to see it moved a little bit. I don't know if that's, if that, if the developer can hear us and hear Mr. Mendoza and I's concerns about that. But overall, philosophically, this road makes a lot of sense just for transportation in general and I think for safety too, actually. So, um, I'm gonna be in support of it, but, because we get two readings for annexation. Is that correct? Confirm that I said that right?
We do.
Okay.
I'm, I'm gonna, I think I know where you're going. And if I can respond to that, in order to move the road any bit, it would require a new meets and bounds because we are annexing specifically based on the survey that's provided in the packet. So what you, what's in front of you is this. If, if we're going to shift it at all, then we kind of have to backtrack a little bit.
I understand that and I'm, and I'm being pretty, pretty blunt.
Okay, thank you.
I'll say it shortly about that. I, I just have some concerns with the amount of people that live right across the street from it. And I know it's surveyed out and things like that. I just wish, um, there was some way that that could be moved a little bit farther to the north, towards Reedville.
Mr. Gary, do you have something?
Mayor, just on, you had the question about two readings. So normally that would work if, if there's a, a motion to approve that carries, then we would go back to second reading. But on this motion to deny, if that were to carry, then that actually would not allow us to second reading.
Yeah, and I appreciate the clarification. And I knew that was the case, but it also could impact my vote, whether I might be in support of it even from the beginning, even if there's a motion to deny.
Okay. I too was not happy originally with the location of this road. But upon further conversation, the question is if and when the road goes across the street, do we want, if it goes further, I'm gonna say up and to the right, okay, that then what's gonna happen or what will happen to the land between the road and the backs of those houses? It could be an industrial building with... Let me finish for everybody else then. I know, you may know, but I'm gonna finish for everybody else. That, um, you're at the back of an industrial building, possibly with trucks coming through, et cetera. Or you've got a wide roadway that I'm not thrilled about calling roadways buffers because noise travels across. But land-wise, and then my thought was, but that's the backs of their houses, but I've been paying more attention, there's backs of houses up to roadways everywhere, right? Here in town, over, like, candlelight... Like candlelight, the other one. So anyway, that's when I became more comfortable with the road being here Than the original, which was further North. So that's, that's where I am on the road, is I'm not thrilled about it, but I think given those two options It's probably better, and so that's how I became comfortable with this. I'm not thrilled about a road going out on 1984 because it's, if the trucks are actually using that Yeah, that road built many years ago, and I have traveled it because I lived in Maxwell for three and a half years. And traveled that road at least twice a day. And I go out there, visit people, do whatever. So yeah, I'm out there on that road A reasonable amount of times.
And I want to throw it out there too, I, I ride my bike on the east side out there and I ride to Martindale. Um, and I pop out right there at 110 and then I ride over to 1984. And, uh, that's a wild stretch there between 110 and 1984 on 80. And anything we could do to alleviate some of the pressure on that is going to be a benefit and, um, I'm going to be, I'm going to be a no on the, the motion to deny, and I am going to be in support of it. And I'll encourage my colleagues to really think this through, big picture of where This is potentially going to lead and what this could benefit In the future and not just To deny it because it, it may not look good now, right? It's hard to be forward thinking here and these are tough decisions. I'm not 100% happy with this, but I think overall, um, it's going to be a net benefit to the people that live out there and To the future growth that's going to happen out there.
Yeah. I'm really glad we've got the light there now at 80 and 1984, because you're right, it was Wild West at that Intersection and also the next one up in Martindale, a friend of mine was killed in There. So, and his, it wasn't even a drunk driver, he was waiting to turn left Had already turned his wheels, somebody hit him from behind, which forced him into the other lane, driver hit him. So yeah, bad things have happened out there. Anything else? Then Ms. Trevino, we're going to vote on the motion to deny where yes means no.
Yes means no, okay. Ms. Garza?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Mayor Houston?
No.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Gleason?
No.
Mr. Mendoza?
No.
Mr. Prather?
No.
And Mr. Scott?
Yes.
You will, okay. So the motion fails with three yeses and four nos.
Make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Prather to approve. Any further discussion?
Uh, yes ma'am, I wanted to ask some questions about that.
Go ahead.
I understand What may go into, if, if we ask them, or I don't want to use the word demand, but if we strongly suggest That they move it or just consider what other routes we can have as they exit. How much, uh, will you have to go back and, and redo everything?
So the engineer is here, if you wanted to ask any questions about potential movement. But as far as process wise, we have notification out, maps out, everything is out With this meets and bounds, this map is in the newspaper, everything's out. So we essentially go back and start over with notification and everything if they If they're willing to or propose to move it, and that would be For any annexation case, if the boundaries change, we have to start over.
I do just, Mayor, I got one comment on the motion to approve.
Uh huh.
Um, if I can. I am voting yes on the first time here, but as I've always stated, sometimes on the second time around Something could come to light, and I do just want to make the developer engineer aware of that. Um, that there could be a potential change in vote, but I am going to be in support of this as of right now.
Anything else?
No ma'am.
Counsel, anything else?
Ms. Garza?
Uh, yeah, I just would appreciate more feedback from the staffs, um, If not right now, then in the second reading, because I'm just like trying to understand the assertions that my colleagues have made. Um, claiming that this is going to, that this is like Uh, life-saving, um, interventions of some sort, um, I'm just like trying to wrap my head around that, and you know, I like struggle, like a visual person, but I'm also just kind of like How, how does this help with that? Uh, Does that make sense? Like Because I didn't hear anything in your presentation that like this is like some Um, super innovative way that is going to help reduce, uh, accidents and Preservation of life on the road.
So I can kind of res- try to respond from what I had in the presentation and maybe I didn't spend enough time on it. Is that as we're looking at the transportation master plan and looking at roadways We're considering what we call redundancy. So if you have one road that goes east and west It's always good to have another road that goes east and west because it gives people two options. So someone gave the example of If you are driving from Reedville, you're on the other side of the railroad tracks and you're going towards SH 80, State Highway 80, but you want to go to I-35 North, you want to, you know, just get over to the New Buc-E's, for example. You don't have to go all the way down to the intersection of Highway 80 And FM 1984, because you will have this new road where you can turn To get to 110, which will then take you up to I-35. So it just gives you another option for driving from point A to point B. And if there is, for, for example, an accident at that intersection, it gives you another option without having to go A mile or two around to get around the block. So we call that redundancy and it's providing alternate roadways that are parallel to each other To give people options. That's why planners like gridded streets.
I think of that every time I drive down Hawkins.
Uh, good evening, Richard Reynosa, Assistant Director of Engineering. Um, I just wanted to mention a couple of things. Um, we did have discussions with Caldwell County, um, early in the process and, and there is a path forward for them To go through Caldwell County and build this road. Um, it was important to us to control more of it and, and for it to meet city standards, both The street and drainage. And also in prior agreements, it was important for us to keep this road. There was an option At one point where this road could have been dissolved and it could have just been internal roadways. And they could have managed the internal circulation, but it was important for us To keep this roadway and establish a connection between 1984 and 110. There is considerable drainage that is, that they're managing With this development, um, as part of those agreements and, and what they're having to do. Because without this roadway, that drainage could prevent them or would have been at a cost that they would have just chosen For half the property to access 110 and half of it to access 1984. So this, this roadway provides that critical infrastructure and connection between 1984 and 110. And, and as well, they have land across 1984. Um, that's, that's part of this agreement and, and, and is proposed for development as well. So they do have path forward going through the county. Again, the, the, Ben Ruby with Kim Lee Horn is, is a representative for the developer. If you have any questions for him He can maybe be able to speak on some of those items, but, um, you know, that, that, that road was coming either Either through the city or through the city and the county. And we felt that it was important for us to review and look at those plans directly.
Is the location of this road due to elevation, low spots?
I wouldn't say those are where dri- drove it.
Okay. It just occurred to me, maybe that did, and I was just wondering. Okay.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Does it include sewer? Do they pay for sewer out that way yet? Or is that just not company yet? That's in a different?
There is a plan for extension of sewer for, to serve.
Are they paying for that?
Yes.
And including upsizes or any of that stuff?
They're paying for their portion of it, the city.
So the city's still having to pay for upsizing and for future development, correct?
If we intend for it to gr- serve a greater area, the city would be responsible.
How much would that be?
Uh, we don't have those numbers.
Roughly?
Um, we, we don't have those numbers. We also don't have any areas that are proposed to be served by those lines, so it's predominantly They're paying for these lines to serve themselves. We have some capacity that we're looking to supplement Through the airport. Some of these lines would extend and offset some of our undersized infrastructure within the airport. So there's some existing shortfalls that the city has that this project would actually help us Get those extensions out there and we would pay our portion of those upsizing of those lines.
Yeah, a lot of the upsizing stuff really kind of gets us. I If we do develop this in the future, I think it's important to have upsizing be on them.
And we pay those through impact fees, so those other developments that come and take Take advantage or take that capacity, they're paying the impact fees, which we're paying our portion of those, that upsizing with, so So in a way, they are paying for those costs.
Because it's the impact fees on that land, so.
No, I, I hear you, I'm just thinking for the future.
It's just a different route that the money takes. Anything else from y'all? Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns from city council?
I'm sorry, I do, I'm so.
Oh, go ahead.
So, there was like, I, I can't I think Mr. Mendoza and Mr. Gleason con- like made comments about Like where its position, like its proximity to, uh, neighbors and whatnot. Um, is my Like, I think my takeaway from that exchange is that we don't want to contemplate, uh, or give direction Or explore, like, what a A shift would be because it would be time-consuming, like staff would have to re, uh, Like begin the process for a public hearing from the beginning. Is that Because I kind of just, kind of like got a little bit lost there.
Are you asking about if the roadway is moved?
Yeah.
Okay, and basically the game starts over, correct? Because what we said to the public, we were looking at was X and now it would be Y and, um, Yeah, it would start over with how, whatever timeframe that takes.
Right, and that was just a response to the question of what happens if You know, we decide we want it moved somewhere, that, that was Not an indication that it's not something we would want to do. Development takes time. Um, but I think, you know, one of the Comments by the mayor, that this actually provides some distance between proposed industrial buildings and those houses. It's kind of one of the reasons that staff found that the location is, wouldn't be the worst if it were to cross 1984, and we don't know the future of that road yet because we're not there yet.
Exactly. But we have to look at the what ifs
Yes.
To a certain extent. Okay, anything else? I guess we're going to vote, Ms. Trevino.
Right, uh, Mayor Houston?
Oh, hold on. This is a vote on the approval Where yes means yes and no means no, and we may Hold the end of the vote till he gets back. But I'm, we're going to move on a little bit and we're going to take a break after this item, just so everybody knows.
All right, uh, Mayor Houston?
I will say yes.
Mr. Gonzalez? Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye, with the expectation That that developer is going to come back and explain to us why they feel this is the best.
Thank you. Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
No.
Ms. Garza?
No.
Okay, the motion passes four to zero, wait, four to two and then one absent.
Okay, and Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Gonzalez, could you come back in and vote please, sir? Uh, while we're waiting, could we have a map like either this one or one similar? Because I really did feel a bit at a disadvantage without having more definitive maps and If we're going to prove this end of the roadway, I'd really like to see where the other end's going. So this was extremely helpful So we could have this one. And we have all voted and we're waiting on you and it's the motion to approve.
Oh, mine's going to be, uh, no, we're still talking.
Same one, uh huh. And your vote is?
No.
Okay.
Four to three.
All right, so, and that closes that out, correct? All right, then we're going to take a recess. It is now 7:44. Please be back at 7:54. Back to order, it is 7:57 And we are on item 10.
Receive a stat presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2024-28 Annexing into the city approximately 7.913 acres of land In Hays County, Texas, generally located on the south side of Rancho 12 Approximately 1,200 feet northwest of West Center Point Road In case number AN-24-05, La Cima PEC substation Including procedural provisions and provide an effective date, consider approval of ordinance 2024-28 on the first of two readings.
Presentation.
Mayor, Council, Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. This request is for annexation of almost eight acres For Penner Nellis Electric Cooperative PEC Substation. The applicant has requested character District 1 zoning for the property, which is the next item on the agenda. The development is subject to the La Cima Development Agreement And the City of San Marcos will provide any necessary water and wastewater to the site. Next slide. Today we're holding a public hearing and seeking action, oh, my extra slides got added, awesome. Um, the surrounding zoning is mostly ETJ, the properties in the county. Also within the, the La Cima Development Agreement, we also have the P zoning, which is the city's fire station. Next slide. All utility extensions will be provided by the developer. Next slide. And we can skip this one, we talked about utilities. The property is within the Edwards Aquifer Recharge Zone, but the La Cima Development Agreement includes mitigation To mitigation strategies to impact My goodness, I don't have my notes because these slides got added. There are mitigation strategies in the development agreement. Next slide. All right, we can skip the proposed plat, was in your packet, and this evening we're holding a public hearing, seeking action on first reading of the ordinance And staff recommends approval as presented.
Okay, I will.
And that concludes my presentation.
Open the public hearing. Is there anyone in chambers wishing to speak far against or about?
Mayor, council members, Eric Willis, 1104 Lafayette Lane, I am here in favor of this item and I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? If not, I will Close the public.
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Hearing and accept a motion From Mr. Gleason with a second from Mr. Prather, that was for approval, correct? Thank you. And Counsel, questions, concerns, thoughts?
I say it all the time, La Cima is a great community partner and for our business community, if they're watching, um, follow their lead.
And we will vote.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza? And Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Moving on To item 11, still in the public hearing portion of our program this evening.
Receive a stat presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2024-29 Admitting the official zoning map of the city in case number ZZ-24-2005, apologies. La Cima PEC Substation by rezoning approximately 7.5 acres of land in Hays County, Texas Generally located on the south side of Rancho 12, approximately 1,200 feet Northwest of West Center Point Road from Future Development FD District to Character District 1, CD1. Were subject to consent of the owner and other less intense zoning district classification, including procedural provisions and provide an effective date. And consider approval of ordinance 2024-29 on the first of two readings.
Presentation.
Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. This zoning is associated with the previous annexation. Next slide. It's subject to the La Cima Development Agreement. Surrounding uses include vacant land, the city's fire station The San Marcos Academy and a substation, electric substation owned by the City of San Marcos. Next slide. Most of the land adjacent is still in the ETJ. It will be annexed if it's within the La Cima Development Agreement boundary as it develops. And the applicant has requested character District 1 zoning Which is primarily intended for open space but allows a utility as a primary use. Next slide. The subject property is in a low-intensity zone on the preferred scenario map. Next slide. And based on the low-intensity designation and the request for a character district, table 4.1 sends us to the next slide, which is table 4.6. Where we can see that character District 1 is a district that can be considered in this area. Let's skip two slides To again mention that the property is in the Edwards Aquifer Recharge Zone. However, the La Cima Development Agreement includes mitigation standards for development in this area. Next slide. No new streets are proposed associated with this annexation or zoning. Next slide. Planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended approval of the request. Staff recommends approval, and that concludes my presentation.
I will open the public hearing and ask, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak far against or about this item?
Mayor, council members, Eric Willis, 1104 Lafayette Lane, I'm here to speak in favor of this item. If you need me to answer any questions, I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? I will close the public hearing and await a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Mr. Mendoza, seconded by
Second.
Mark Gleason. And that's for approval?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. And Questions, concerns, thoughts? Same piece of land we were just talking about? Ms. Trevino, we will vote.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza? Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six to zero with one absent.
On to item twelve.
Receive a stat presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty, annexing into the city approximately three point four three acres of city-owned land known as Rattler Substation in Hays County, Texas, generally located southeast of the intersection of Clovis Barker Road and Leah Avenue, case number AN dash twenty-four dash dash zero five, including procedural provisions and provide an effective date, and consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty on the first of two readings.
Another presentation.
Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services, this subject property is currently developed as a City of San Marcos electric substation, and the land is owned by the City of San Marcos, if annexed, the property will be zoned future development, and no other zoning district is proposed for this property since utility is an allowable use in the FD zoning district, next slide, the property is surrounded by vacant land and industrial uses, some in the ETJ, and some zoned light industrial, next slide, actually skipped two slides, today, we're holding the public hearing and seeking action on first reading of an ordinance, and staff recommends approval as presented, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, I will open the public hearing and ask, is there anyone here who wishes to speak far or against or about this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and await a motion.
Most to approve, second.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gleason, for approval. Questions, concerns, thoughts on this item? I thought we'd done this years ago, so, okay, Mr. Trevino, we will vote.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six to zero with one absent.
And that concludes the public hearing portion of our program this evening, we are on to the non-consent agenda, item thirteen.
Consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one on the first of two readings, admitting chapter ninety, article four, records of the San Marcos City Code for the purposes of modifying signage requirements, placing responsibility for administering the wrecker rotation system with the city marshal, improving safety equipment requirements, increasing the response time allowed for wreckers, improving impound and inventory requirements, expanding the locations for storage facilities to include the extra, extraterritorial jurisdiction, increasing maximum fees for all types of towels and related services, creating a duty for storage facilities to report vehicles received to the police department, and providing new fees and penalties for violations, including procedural provisions and provide an effective date.
Most to approve, second.
Motion from Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gleason, for approval. Y'all here for, to answer questions?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm going to have a few.
I know.
Thank you for whoever answered the ones on my message board earlier.
Yes, um, my name is Samantha Dale, I'm the parking coordinator for the city marshals in the City of San Marcos, so I have answers to any questions you might have.
I know, and I forgot to ask one, so, um, if y'all saw the, um, my questions, part of my concern was about the signage, and there's signage to be deleted, there's still going to be signage warning people that if you park here, you're likely to be towed, or you're, it could be towed, correct?
Yes, they're still required to have the TDLR standardized signage present, um, it's just removing the City of San Marcos sign, the extra sign.
Thank you, that's all I needed to know about that, and I'm still curious, why we didn't just say marshal throughout the whole thing, because the marshal can always designate someone, because in one place, it's got you, and in one place, it's got deputy marshal, but everywhere else is said marshal, I'm willing to go with it if y'all are, it just seemed a little odd, so, it's, it's okay, but that was that question, um, okay, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, just one quick question, um, when y'all decided to do all this, was there a committee formed, and if there was, was there any wrecker, wrecker owners there?
So, we didn't form a committee, but I did hold a rotational wrecker meeting, um, that we hold quarterly, just to keep in contact with everybody, so there were several, um, of the owners who participated and were a part of it as well.
Was there any opposition to what you presented?
None. Not within, we were all in agreement by, um, by the end of it, so.
Thank you.
Well, it takes out some of the, and it raises the fees, when is the last time we changed fees?
Two thousand and eight.
I thought I read that, and I thought surely we have looked at it since then, so, Ms. Reyes, shouldn't this be part of our fee structure that we review once every three years, is it because it's buried in the ordinance, and should this be a fee schedule that we're reviewing, that the, the, the actual dollar amounts are not buried in the ordinance, because that's what we've been doing with other things, are we looking to do that?
Yes, I'm looking at Mr. Huff, uh, Marshall Huffman, and, and he is, um, he's saying yes, and of course, because it had shifted, you know, in terms of now being under the marshal's office, so it's something that we've taken up anew, but yes, that is something that will be the plan to keep these, keep this on a regular rotation for review.
But if it's in the ordinance and not in the fee schedule, we're going to miss it again, and I don't want to go another sixteen years before we look at it, so why not, why not do it now?
Yes, and let me, let me check with, uh, John Locke, just to make sure that all of that is done for the fee schedule for the budget ordinance that, that you would be approving.
Okay.
Coming up.
Because we've been trying to take dollars out of ordinances for a while, and it seems like now might be a good time, maybe between now and the next reading, I'm not suggesting anything change, but we, I, everything, most of our other fees are on a three-year, we review them every three years, and I just think that would be good. Anything else from anybody? Yeah, this is ninety-eight percent the same, except it's actually removed a few things and increased the fees, so. Okay, um, hold on, and I don't see Ms., she wasn't feeling well, I don't see her on, okay, Ms. Trevino, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Alrighty, items, moving on to item fourteen.
Consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two granting consent to the annexation of seven four, seventy-four point two nine acres of situs, addressed fifty-seven forty Redwood Road by the Guadalupe County Municipal Utility District Number Nine, providing for the adoption of this ordinance on only one reading as an emergency and provide an effective date.
Most to approve.
Motion from Mr. Scott for approval, uh, looking for a second.
I'll second.
I'll give that to Mr. Mendoza, I heard him first, um, is there a presentation, questions?
Uh, Mayor, there's no presentation, staff's available to answer questions, though.
I just thought somebody might give a paragraph of explanation of what we're doing here, since this isn't a routine item.
Uh, certainly, um, back in, uh, uh, May, uh, council approved, uh, cost sharing agreement for a second wastewater treatment plant, and, uh, that was with several developments that were proposed as part of that, uh, uh, agreement, and now, within that agreement, there was a, uh, a consent, uh, that was, um, referenced, that the city would provide consent within sixty days for, uh, uh, requests like this, I think with the, uh, lack of a, uh, council meeting in July, the second council meeting, that kind of put us in a situation where we needed this approval, uh, at this meeting, uh, under one reading, so, uh, we have Director Gorth here, if you'd like to, uh, provide any additional details or have any additional questions.
And, and I would just follow that up, that'll actually be the case for the next three items, well, this item and the following two items relate to the cost sharing agreement.
Yeah, okay. And, Mr. Trevino, we will vote.
Okay, Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Yes, Mayor Houston. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Alrighty, on to item fifteen, please.
Consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three granting consent to the creation of Sedona Municipal Utility District Number One and the inclusion therein of approximately two hundred and seventy-nine point four eight, four acres of land located within the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction in the vicinity of State Highway one twenty-three and FM nineteen seventy-eight, providing for the adoption of this ordinance on twenty-one reading as an emergency and provide an effective date.
Most to approve, second.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Mendoza, for approval, um, any questions? We'll vote.
Okay, Ms. Garza? Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
On to item sixteen.
Consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty-four granting consent to the creation of Sedona Municipal Utility District Number Two, and in the inclusion therein of approximately three hundred and thirty-seven point three nine six acres of land located within the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction in the vicinity of State Highway one twenty-three and FM seventeen, nineteen seventy-eight, providing for the adoption of this ordinance on only one reading as an emergency and provide an effective date.
Most to approve.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by?
I'm second.
By Mr. Gonzalez, and, uh, and of course, this is for, uh, the positions that will, uh, will be voting on, there are no names in here yet, because the filing period is not over, and.
We're on number sixteen.
What, I'm sorry, what am I in?
Number sixteen.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm moving ahead, I'm moving ahead, sorry, um, never mind.
Ready to vote?
I'll say that, and number seventeen, yes, we'll vote on sixteen, I'm getting tired.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza? And Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
I forgot there were two parts to this one, okay.
Seventeen, consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash dash thirty-five ordering any general election to be held on November fifth, twenty twenty-four, for the purpose of electing a mayor, city council member for place five, and a city council member for place six, making provisions for conducting the election, providing for the approval of this ordinance as an emergency measure on only one reading and provide an effective date.
Most to approve, second.
And now, I will say that there's no names here, because it's still open, and, Ms. Gonzalez.
If I don't want to let this.
To council?
Still, can I vote? No.
Good one.
I like that.
I almost said most to deny.
So, if there's a runoff election, it's on December fourteenth?
The election, yes, it's on Saturday.
Which means still here for a while.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Ready to vote?
Yeah, we'll vote.
Mr. Gleason? Yes.
Yeah, uh, by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
And Mr. Mendoza?
Uh, we're all confused.
The motion to approve, to put these out, to put the, the three positions on ballot.
Now, this one can you make it?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mayor, Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Now, we're on to number eighteen.
Okay, consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash one thirty-eight R approving a contract with Strickland Hell Group for the repair of hail damage to city vehicles in the estimated amount of one million four hundred and eighty-three thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars to be paid through the TML interlocal, intergovernmental risk pool, less a twenty-five thousand deductible paid by the city, authorized city manager or designee to execute the contract on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Most to approve, second.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gleason, for approval, questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Couple of questions, actually, how many vehicles are there that were damaged?
Oh, the list was in here, it was a long one.
Mr. Scott, it's two hundred and forty-six total.
Two hundred and forty-six vehicles, and is the twenty-five thousand just our only deduction?
Yes, that's a great interest.
That's a really good.
Yeah.
That's like, that's like, wow.
Yeah.
Got to, got to credit the Human Resources Department on that one.
Yeah, good job.
Yeah, now, the list starts on six hundred, page six thirty-eight, it was, I looked at that and went, oh, way, way more than that.
What the hell happened?
That, uh, May ninth, uh, May ninth hailstorm.
Yeah, what the hell happened?
A lot of folks.
I got a letter last week from, uh, my home insurance carrier, and it said they're pulling out of Texas, but this is separate through TML, like, so, and if you notice, I'm sure everyone noticing their car insurance, home insurance are just skyrocketing, um, but with major insurance carriers pulling out of, you know, Florida, Texas, things like that, um, do we, I mean, just, do we have concerns, or is TML give us some extra?
TML's like self-funded?
Let me defer to Ms. Basic on the insurance question.
Okay.
Please.
And just a reminder that we're, it's not, we're really on a procurement item, but, I think we can answer one question, but then we probably ought to not go too far afield from that at this, after that.
Good evening, Linda Spacek, Director of Human Resources, many years ago, this was where the risk pool was initially founded, when the commercial insurance started bottoming out, and, uh, public entities had problems procuring insurance, and cities came together to form this risk pool that will sustain our needs during these times, so.
Well, it's great, one point five million dollars in damages and a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible, I think we have a great insurance policy then.
That deductible program will likely be going away in the future as a result of this, but the good news is we'll have insurance to understand.
Yeah. Alrighty, we'll vote.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
On to item nineteen.
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash one thirty-nine R approving the award of a construction contract to Peyton Construction, Inc., for the Comanche Pump Station Improvements Project in the estimated amount of three million two hundred and eighteen thousand forty-six dollars, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute the contract on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Mendoza, I assume that's for approval?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
My apologies.
Questions? Concerns? Let's vote.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
On to item twenty.
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash one forty R approving a double, developer participation agreement with Lennar Homes of Texas Land and Construction with Lennar Homes of Texas Land and Construction, LTD, providing for the city to participate in the cost of water line construction along Staples Road to cover the cost of additional improvements needed by the city in an amount not to exceed $2,348,7646, authorizing the city manager or her designee to execute said agreement on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by.
Second.
Mr. Mendoza. Concerns? Would the city staff look at page 667? Is that development in yellow, got the wrong name on it?
I need to confirm, I can look it up to confirm it, but it appears to be in the correct general area, but.
Okay.
Let me.
We, we just, okay, it's, it's, it's fine, the, the water line's in the right place, so I think we're okay.
Yes, the water line's in the correct spot.
All right. Okay, we have motion and a second. Questions? Concerns? We'll vote, Mr. Trevino.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
And Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
On to item 21.
Consider appointments to fill vacancies on the boards and commissions and provide direction to staff, A, library board, B, Veteran Affairs Advisory Committee.
Okay, folks, there are seven people interested in one position, on the library board. You know, our applicants, we just keep getting more and more and more diverse and people want to be involved and I'm just so excited, and I did suggest that anyone not here, that someone reach out to them and advise them about friends of the library, so hopefully that may happen. So, anyway. I think it was Vanessa.
Vanessa McMahon.
Vanessa McMahon?
The very first one was on the list.
You're nominating her, okay. So, you're nominating her. I would like to nominate Paula Hamilton. Do we have a slot for a non-resident?
I believe they're all residents.
Because I think they all are now. We've got two slots, one or two, so it's okay to nominate Ms. Hamilton.
Yes.
Okay.